Today's episode is brought to you by DeSanto Propane. DeSanto Propane is four generations strong as a trustworthy family-owned business with unmatched customer service. Go online at de santopropane.com for more info or call toll-free at 1-800-752-4574. Since 1937, the difference has been DeSanto Propane. From finger lakes one.com, I'm Josh Dursow and this is FLX. Today, this hour, we are continuing our meet the candidate series with an individual looking to represent voters in Ward number two of Canandaigua. Sean, thanks so much for taking the time to talk with us today. Really appreciate it. Let's start with the big question on everybody's mind. Why are you running?
Um, well, actually, this is my third time running. Okay, I did run two years ago for at large and then four years ago as well for at large. Four years ago was my first time and I have learned so much between then and now. A about politics in general, but B about how things in the city work. Originally, okay, four years ago, it was, you know what? I'm tired of complaining about things, so it's either put up or shut up. Okay, so I was headed down and I saw a friend that I was on the Canandaigua City Comprehensive Plan with. And he said, hey, Sean, I'm coming down to a Canandaigua City Republican meeting. Why don't you come with me? And I said, absolutely, sure. And so I came in and saw a bunch of people I knew. And at that point, they needed one more person on the ticket. And Bob looked at me, Palumbo, our mayor, and said, Sean, would you like to be our fourth person? And I got immediate support from three other people at the meeting. And I said, yeah, okay, this is probably a better way to go about changing things. So since then, I have been running and like I said, learning. And I got to within 19 votes two years ago. So third time's a charm.
I guess the obvious follow-up to that is why run again? Campaigns are not easy. It's work.
No, you're not.
Time consuming. So what, what made you this time say, you know, I think this isn't an at-large seat. This is an award seat, so I want to do it.
Regardless of whether it was award seat or whether it was at large, I did want to do it. I was really encouraged by how close I came in the last election. And I've also gotten lots of encouragement from people that said, you, you're running again. Right? And when I tell people, yes, I'm running again, they're like, oh, good. I know the perception of politics. Like, no, I mean, let's face it. Congress was at 11% approval rating and it's only going down from there. But my, a very close friend of mine, who at one point was the mayor of Scottsville for a long time. He actually kept me going and said, look, no one cares if Congress spends $13 billion on a new aircraft carrier. But your neighbors do care about how you spend their money and they're gonna tell you. And they're not going to be ashamed to tell you. And that's where you can actually have, I don't want to say the most power, but the most impact is in your local community. They say, I mean, yeah, it's cliche, all politics is local, but it is true. It really is.
How do you go about, if elected, how do you go about keeping local politics local and keeping the outside? I'll say state and national noise, maybe less the state stuff, but the national noise out of the dialogue? So that progress can continue to be made because at the end of the day, you're talking about property taxes. How's the city look? How's the city feel? That's very like tangible stuff for people who live in neighborhoods in the city.
Oh, yeah. One thing I really want to do, I mean, okay, when I was running before, a good friend of mine, Jim Turwilliger, who did serve on council for a number of years, looked and said, Sean, I am glad you are running. We need some balance on city council. Unfortunately, I was not as adept to say, can I quote you on that? So, um, but a big, hmm, I don't want to say issue, but a big thing in any political level, whether it's local, all the way up through national is one party rule. Okay. Because then it just becomes talking points. So you do, we, we do need balance so that we can have, A, opposing views. B, we can hash out and get to the root of what the problems are. And then the second thing is communication. All right. By the time things get to city council in Canandaigua, and I am learning that, like I said, I am learning so much through this process. Not only about city politics, but how things happen in the city itself. By the time things get to, and when I say things, issues, okay? By the time they get to city council, it's been filtered. It's been filtered through a couple of different levels in city management. So I want to open up city council accessibility. And whether that be we personally bring it. And, and I was even thinking, well, let's see, we have a State of the Union. We have a state of the state. Why not have a state of the city? So that, but, but do it in reverse. Whereas instead of the mayor standing up and giving a speech like the governor does, or the president does, or things like that. Why don't we sit down and have a special session once a year? But instead have the heads of all the different departments make an annual report directly to city council as well as the mayor. So, um, the chief of police comes in and gives a report on issues involving crime in the city. The, um, uh, fire chief comes in and says, and gives us a report directly from them regarding issues for, health provision or medical aid or fires or things like that. The head of DPW come in and give us a report and say, this is where we're lacking. This is what we need to do, things like that. And then finish up with the city manager coming in and giving us a general report on the whole thing. So it, yeah, it's something, something needs to be, to happen to get more direct access between. I mean, other than, yes, okay. We see everyone in Wegmans. We see everyone walking up Main Street. All right. Which is why, you know, someone, I was reading something online and they said, you know, all politicians lie. And so I responded and I said, well, I've never met you. How do you know I lie to you? Well, it's just a given. I'm like, why would it be advantageous for me? Because the next day you can turn around and at Wegmans or on Main Street and stop me or on the pier or something like that and just say, hey, you said this, this is what is actually happening. Do you want to tell me what the difference is? So, yeah, it's, and therein going back to the all politics is local. Yeah, we, we can't hide from anything when it's your neighbors and they turn around and see you on a daily basis.
When you talk to voters, either in, in the ward or around the city, is that, I guess, that frustration or the lack of desire to engage with city council, the thing that stands out most to you? Because one thing that we've, we see consistently in every community is kind of the lack of engagement between, or at least from the, the resident standpoint, you know, most elected boards would probably be thrilled if 40 people showed up to every single city, town or village council meeting, but that just doesn't happen, right?
So like, no, it doesn't. You're right.
What do you think could change or what would you like to contribute to the change to maybe reverse that trend? So people are more engaged and it isn't just this assumption that government is there to stymie me or to make my life more difficult instead of being there for them.
Excellent question. I, I don't have an immediate answer for that. There are probably people who are much smarter than I, who could probably give you a quick off the cuff answer. But, I mean, they're open to the public. They're on Zoom. They're on local cable channel. It's, I don't know how we can make it more open and accessible. Because it, I mean, you, you already have complete access.
Right.
To, well, to the public portions. And then of course, there are closed sessions, which is just discussion between city council members, mayor, city manager, things like that. But it's already open and accessible.
Yep.
As far as trying to get people engaged, therein lies the problem more so than I think the accessibility. Wow.
No need to, yeah, no need to give an absolute answer. I always throw that question to folks because I think it's, it's a question that, that is worth trying to figure out long-term. But also some folks just have, you know, canned answers for that. I, I understand that that's, you know.
Okay, that's, that goes back to the all politicians lie. They always want to have an answer. Sometimes the answer really is, I don't know. Let's figure it out. Let's you and I sit down, you as the, the constituent and me as city council. Let's sit down and have that discussion. So.
All right, so let's, uh, let's shift gears here and talk about some more specific issues. Obviously, health of lakes and the environment at large is a common thread throughout the entire region. It's not exclusive or unique to Canandaigua at all. What do you see Canandaigua City Council doing now to address the health of Canandaigua Lake? What would you like to see them do in the future?
Okay, every single politician is going to talk about the lake just because it's near and dear to everyone. Geneva, you know, has Seneca Lake and, and Skinny Atlas and Honeyoy. And yes, we all and, and everyone is very paternal, very protective of their lakes. Canandaigua already has put in lots of, of different policies and ordinances that help our lake. And, and everyone says, I am actually, which I have to say, I'm very proud of because I've gone up to constituents and they say, oh, you're the lake guy. Because for the past five years, minus 2020, when nobody did anything. But for the past five years, I have actually cleaned up the lake because I am a scuba diver. And so I coordinate literal lake cleanups and literally pull trash out of Canandaigua Lake. I've been doing it for the last five years. I'm not going to stop and it's not even, it's like, oh, he's doing this as a political stunt. No, I'm not on the city council. So I'm not doing this as look at how good I am on cleaning up the lake. No, I'm doing this because I was, I'm a fourth generation Canandaiguan who was on my grandfather's sailboat before I could walk. So yes, the lake is, uh, it's, it's part of how I grew up. Now, going back to keeping all politics local and trying to stay away from state and federal. The pendulum, I think, for the climate activism culture has gone too far. And so I come back to that message of balance again. All right. We, yeah, we have a lot of agriculture as well as, um, the lakes. But a big part of New York state economy is agriculture. I mean, we're talking billions of dollars in economic feasibility here in the area. So I think we need to sit down and it's not an easy fix. You can't just say, well, let's ban plastic straws. Okay. Okay, what about the ketchup bottle? The mustard bottle? The fruit, the bags that the fruit comes, I mean, why specifically plastic straws? But there is that big push. Interestingly enough, all of the paper straws have forever chemicals in them, but hey, the optics are good. Now, again, agriculture, but then we have to balance it with tourism. Because the lake brings a lot of tourism dollars in, as it does with all the rest. Now, this year, and I am extremely happy to see Canandaigua as a city bounce back. This summer, I think I have seen more people at the lakeshore and walking up and down Main Street and visiting the lake house and the new hotel. I mean, it will be forever called the birdcage by we locals, but the, the new hotel. So Canandaigua as a city is coming back economically and it is so great to see. So we've got to balance that into the equation. Now, I think the biggest thing that the state has done and the city along with them is the boat stations at the state launch. I think more than anything, that has helped have an impact on the health and safety of our lake. And we still don't have our washing station yet, but that's, you know, dealing with New York state and the, the politics that that's involved. But we are getting one, we are getting it. That's, that's also good. Because I remember, I remember when the zebra mussels first came into the area and, and there was an explosion because it was an invasive species, which more so than anything else, I feel from talking to people who are more knowledgeable than I. That is the biggest thing because, I mean, if you look at the Great Lakes right now, even landlocked Lake Michigan is having problems with invasive species. So I think if we can get that under control as an achievable goal. I mean, no, we're probably not going to ever solve that problem. That's always going to be something that's going to happen. But if we can mitigate that down to the smallest amount, I think that will have the biggest impact.
Absolutely.
For the health and safety of our lakes, so.
Let me, let me throw this at you too. It's kind of in the same basket. What percentage of that, all of that stuff is the city's responsibility to set versus the state or the federal government? Because that is another thing that we hear consistently from readers and viewers and listeners is, I don't want my city council trying to create policy on what plastics should or shouldn't be banned. I don't want them creating ordinances about what kinds of runoff should be allowed or not allowed from farm fields. That's the state's job. That's the DEC's job. Leave it to them. What, what, what do you think the proper balance is? Working with the state in a very small capacity or maybe getting closer to 50/50?
Okay, interestingly enough, I am a volunteer with the DEC. I'm actually a hunter safety instructor. And when I went to, um, clean up the east side of the pier last year, I went down and went to look at what was there, just to see what we were going to have to clean up. And there were tires and, uh, traffic cones. And then all of a sudden I see, oh crap, that's a 55 gallon steel drum. Okay, this is no longer just a Canandaigua issue. Now I have to get the DEC involved. So I emailed my immediate supervisor. I explained to him, I said, all right, what do I do about this? He said, I have no idea. Let me try and find out who's in charge. And a couple of days later, I get an email from someone in spill response. And so I ended up, that cleanup ended up involving myself, the Ontario County Sheriff's Division underwater rescue divers, the New York State DEC, the Canandaigua Police Department, uh, and the Canandaigua DPW. So we all worked together. We coordinate, we did it in two separate dives. The, the sheriff's divers and, and local divers, myself. We cleaned up all the non-potentially toxic stuff. And then they, the state came in with specialists to get out. Now, it ended up being, they determined they were old trash cans. But they had blown in and they had done it, oh God, by the time they were buried, yeah. Probably decades ago. But that is one thing that the city can do. We can police ourselves, but we can work with the state. This, I, all of the people I met, they're like, no, we want to do this stuff. We want to help like this. So let's work together. Absolutely. Now, the lakes themselves are owned by New York state. So they are the ones who passed the laws. We have to make sure that, as you said, we don't go too far. Cause like I said earlier, the, the environmental pendulum has swung. And yes, Finger Lakes Railway is coming through. There you go. There's the two long, one short, one long, so.
It's all good.
City of Canandaigua, right? Yeah, we, it comes back to how do we balance civil liberties with our responsibility? So I think the city needs to police the city and not the lake in general. Okay, I mean.
Fair enough.
Fair enough, yeah.
Fair answer.
We are responsible for us. The moment we believe that we are responsible for, or better yet, we have authority over us. Because we're all responsible for ourselves when it comes down to it. But the problem with government is we have the authority over ourselves. We can't start dictating what other municipalities do with them. We can work with them, which I think we should. There's, I mean, there's the city of Canandaigua, the town of Canandaigua, uh, the town of South Bristol, Gorm, Middlesex, Rushville. So we have multiple municipalities that all touch Canandaigua Lake. We all need to be working together. Okay, it's just, I, I don't know why we can't do it. When I, I just did a cleanup at Deep Run. Okay, we had 20, we had 24 divers. It was a fantastic day. But I said to the supervisor, Fred Lightfoot for the town of Gorm, he said, hey, I, you wanting to clean up is fantastic. Can, can I ask a favor? I said, name it. He said, can you go down and check on and clean, if possible, the intake for, the, the water intake for the town of Gorm? I said, consider it done. And we did it. Okay. I talked with, cause it's a county park. I talked with the supervisor for buildings and grounds for Ontario County. And he said, hey, love the idea that you're going to clean up. Absolutely. We have a state grant to dredge because they've lost a lot of their swimming area due to silt and things like that. And, and so they're going to dredge, uh, late fall. And they said, can you get the, the buoys and, oh, and by the years, oh, over the years, we've lost various anchors and things like that while you guys are down there. If you find, we found seven extra anchors that we pulled out. I mean, it was a successful day all around, but the divers, we won because hey, any day underwater is a great day. Okay, the town of Gorm won. The county of Ontario won, all by just simply working together. That's, I mean, it wasn't a, hey, we're going to come in and we're going to do this and you don't have a say. It's like, hey, let's talk about this. What can we do so that you benefit and we benefit? It's, it's that simple.
A couple more topics here I want to get to before we wrap up. One has to do with housing and the county's effort to figure out what it can do to get housing going in the right direction and also population growth and decline and that balance. Question number one, when it comes to the, the county's housing report and whatever initiatives that are, that come from that over the next, say, six to 12 months, what role do you think city council should have, uh, working along with the county?
Okay, I am running for Ward two. Okay, it's all about the button, like I said. I am running for Ward two. It is economically, except for the condos that are on the front of the lake. It is economically the, um, lowest income portion of the city. Lot of rentals. Historically, it's also one of the oldest parts of the city as well. But interestingly enough, and I found this out when I was sitting on the state mandated comprehensive plan committee. Cause every, um, 10 years you have to come together as a city and, or as a municipality, because everyone has to do it. So I sat on that and found out that can, um, Ward two here down around Jefferson Park, on the, on, on the east side of Jefferson Park, why that's all undeveloped? Because Ward two is also, funny enough, the least developed part of the city. And I found out that in 19, I want to say 70, yeah, it would have been 10 years. So it would have been, you know, 69 getting ready for the 1970 Comprehensive Plan Report that they envisioned kind of a Silicon Valley of the East. Because computers were in its infancy at that point. I mean, as in Zygoat stage. And so they said, hey, Silicon Valley is this big thing. Why don't we set aside a portion of the city of Canandaigua? And so they zoned it light industrial. Nothing ever happened, but it's been zoned light industrial ever since then. And so I looked and said, okay, we have the least amount of roads. So we have the least amount of accessibility. Oh, here we go again. You can drive from, on the west side of Canandaigua, you can drive all the way from North Street down to Parish without ever hitting Main Street. You can do backroads the whole way. You can't do that on the east side. So what I suggested, and it was actually unanimously passed, why don't we change it to residential? And we specifically said to, um, the way our zoning is set up here in Canandaigua, residential is, our one is large family homes, big lots, things like that, like Howell Street and things. So we specifically said, well, let's, let's look at our two so that you can have a slightly higher density, but also smaller homes. Cause one of the biggest problems in Canandaigua is what are called, and I'm sure this is true in a lot of, uh, different places, starter homes. I've talked to young families saying, yeah, I want to live in the city. I want to be able to walk to Main Street. I want to be able to walk to the pier. I want to be able to have my kids walk to school and have that small town feel. All the new houses that are being built are $350,000. I can't swing that. Sorry, it's just, and those are patio homes for crying out loud. And granted, some of that are, are problems with ordinances that were recently passed because of, you know, state environmental concerns and things like that. But the city passed that. And there you go back to the authority of what can the city do? Well, let's not make stupid ordinances that cost a lot of money, but don't really solve any problems. So, yeah, so we said, and it became the recommendation. Now, unfortunately, I don't think anything has been done just because there are other things the city council is dealing with. But I personally, representing Ward two, would like to see more. But I personally, representing Ward two, would like to see more development, especially residential development. Go into what was formerly, formerly that unused area over there. If the city needs to continue East Street all the way down to Salt and Stoll. Let's look at the feasibility of that. Let's look at the feasibility of zoning it or giving special incentives to smaller 11, 1200 foot, square foot starter homes. Incentivize young families to come in because now apartments are the big thing right now. But one thing we were talking about with the comprehensive plan, because we had to have, you know, a, a, a 20,000 square foot view, 20,000 foot view. And look out 10 years and make recommendations out for the future. The baby boomers are all selling their houses and going into apartments. So right now the fast build is, hey, let's build apartments and, because that's where the demand is right now. 10 years, that's not where the demand is going to be. In 10 years, the baby boomers are going to be moving out of their apartments into assisted living. And now we've got all these apartments that young families don't, because they are geared toward young families. Okay, they're one bedroom, 850 square foot apartments. That's fine for retirees. That's fine for baby boomers right now. It's not good long-term if you want to come and settle in and have your family be part of the school district for the next 10, 15 years. Okay? So I think as a city, we need to develop that and work to incentivize young families coming in with houses. Because there's a pride in ownership. I mean, it used to be the go-to American dream to have a family and have your own house that you could call your own. You can make it a home. And when you have good families, you have good taxpayers. If you have good taxpayers, you have a vibrant community. All right? That's what, that's kind of the foundation of growth in a community. Our fam, the, the nuclear family. So I think that's what we need to do, especially, and, and, and Ward two is ripe for that. It really is.
Yeah. And last, actually I want to knock off one other thing here. Population growth and decline. Your, we'll call it your corner of Ontario County is essentially the hotspot in the entire Finger Lakes region of where that booming, of where the growth is population wise.
Little north, Farmington, actually.
Sure.
Ontario County as a whole is the only county growing. But within Ontario, it's actually Victor Farmington is the growth. I'm, Canandaigua is a city, unfortunately, we're kind of stagnant right now. So yeah, but yes, please go ahead.
Close enough to potentially benefit. And I think when a lot, when a lot of folks are looking at the region as a whole, they're looking at that Canandaigua to Victor corridor as a whole. Collectively, when you look at what Western Ontario County is achieving right now with population growth? Because that's largely where Ontario County's overall growth is coming from. What do you see as the, the proper safeguards, I guess, for a city like Canandaigua to be putting in place that way there? The folks who've called Canandaigua home for the last 40, however many years can continue to experience the same city that they've come to know and love for the last, you know, 20 to 40.
Well, okay, please.
Or nothing. Is it embrace it?
No, 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 no. Please expand on what you mean by safeguards. Because, okay, I'm a fourth generation Canandaigua. All right? I, when I was growing up, and the beautiful thing is, to a certain extent, Canandaigua still is that. But when I was growing up, I mean, you hear the stories of you'd grow up in the summer. You'd hop on your bike and you'd be gone for the day. And then you'd, you know, be home by supper type thing. And Canandaigua still is that small town feel where, you know, I would feel perfectly safe. Hell, I, I don't lock my, my, my house door at night. Cause I'm, it, it, it would never cross my mind here in the city. It's like, you see gaggles of, of, of teen and, and pre-teen kids walking around. And I'm like, yeah, no, I have no worries about that. So when you say safeguard, I, I want to know what you mean. Do we want to try to keep that? Because there's always going to be progress and, and I think that's true.
One of the things, one of the common comments or emails that we get about Canandaigua is the city is changing. Whether the people, whether everybody sees that or not, I guess, is, is up for debate. But the, the city has been changing, especially with Western Ontario County growing. The question there would be, does anything need to be done to make sure that the city does remain what you're describing it to be? Which is this place where the people who've called home there can leave their doors unlocked and feel safe and happy and all those good things that they're feeling when they're living in, in, or visiting even Canandaigua.
I think one of the, A, communication between us and the town of Canandaigua, town of Bloomfield, it's like, what are you experiencing? Okay, how can we help? Because it is to our mutual benefit that we keep crime under control. That we, uh, help with. I know one of the big things that I've been hearing, like presentations to, to our Rotary lunches and things like that is homelessness and mental health. Are two big things that as a kid, never even entered my mind. Okay? But now with growth comes the growth of everything. So I think what we as a city need to do, growth right there. There were never any jets when I was, it was, I, and I grew up right down the road from the airport. When it was a 200 foot long grass strip and a Quonset hut, and that was it. Okay? So yeah, there's growth right there for you. But growth brings in, growth of everything, problems along with the good. So I think we need to work with all of the municipalities around us. I think we need to attack. I, again, I'll admit, I don't know the best way to combat some problems. There's always the throwing money at it, but that's never a solution. Unless you're, you're spending your money in targeted places that get results. So do we need to increase training for local law enforcement? So they can be prepared, better prepared to deal with things like this. Absolutely. I've talked to Canandaigua Police because the chief, when he first came in, mandated that every officer during their, during their scheduled time has to park their car, get up and walk in, up and down Main Street. And so I've literally walked because now they're much more accessible. Walked up, introduced myself, asked questions, and all of a sudden our law enforcement are real people now. Okay, they're not just the people that sit in the cars with the speed guns and things like that. They're real people. The, the deputies that I've met with Ontario County Sheriff, okay? They're real people and they have real responsibilities. And so I, and one thing they always say, training, training, training. Okay, good. That's one thing we can do. Let's, let's expand that training to all of the municipalities around us so that we're all on the same page. I don't think we can force, like I said, that's not the role of government. The role of government is not to force things on people just because you have a certain point of view. But yes, we can incentivize and I think we have to target our resources much better than we are now.
And you mentioned, uh, obviously police. I want to ask a question just generally about first responder forces in general. So I'm talking police, fire, EMS, the whole basket. How is the city doing? One thing that we hear repeatedly across the whole region from every agency, recruiting is a nightmare, a complete and total nightmare. What, what would you, how would you like to see city council approach these things in the city? So that fire, EMS, police, all that is, is moving in the right direction and people feel good about where the, the community is.
Okay. I think, see, I've talked to sheriff's deputies because I'm participating in the, what they call their citizens academy. So I'm, I'm meeting several different deputies and I have told them, no, I'm running for, for city council. So I'm asking them questions and saying, what do you want to see? And of course I've talked to chief of police. I said, what do you want to see? We, candidates, the Republican candidates have had a meeting recently with the fire department union. What do you want to see? I've, in my position in Rotary, have met with the Canandaigua Emergency Squad. What do you want to see? The biggest problem we have is not recruitment. It's we recruit them. We spend the money training and then Monroe County swings in and says, you want to earn 30 grand more per year? And they all go, uh, yeah, okay. So here we've spent the money and they're getting the money. Okay? They're getting the benefits. They're getting everything. I don't know that we can match that. We just don't have the tax base. Okay? But I think one thing that we can do is be creative in our quality of life. And then hopefully that translates more to retention. Because if we can retain, then we've saved all that, that money. Okay, all the training money and, and things like that. So I think we need to be creative in, and yes, I know the word taxes comes up a lot and everyone promises, uh, read my lips, no new taxes. All right, we all remember that one. Well, okay, if you're a certain age, you all remember, we all remember that one. But I don't think that, that people have a problem with taxes per se. They have a problem with value. So if we can tell people, hey, if we can spend 20 cents more per thousand, we can get A, B, C, and D, which means you are safer. Your abode is safer and just for 20 cents more. So I think that needs to be communicated and, and I think it's a whole package. Right. Taxes are always going to unfortunately have to go up. That's life. Okay? Inflation is the highest it's been since the Carter administration right now. And unfortunately, everyone's feeling the pain at the pump. Everyone's feeling, I mean, I didn't know, because I'm not on TikTok, but I guess there, the big thing on TikTok now is showing your receipt, your groceries receipt, and then showing the 12 things that you bought at the grocery store on your, your dining room table and going, there's a problem here, folks. So I'm like, oh, interesting. So it's, it's a, it's a complete package, whether it's yes, combination of needed taxes, but incentive, incentives. Maybe, hi Jackie. Hey, can I put a lawn sign, lawn sign on your sign, on your lawn? Thank you, dear. Um, sorry about that. Constituent, actually. So.
Doing the work.
Yep, absolutely. Yeah, it's, it's got to be a whole, a whole plan. Whether it's partial healthcare benefits for volunteers. Or like here in Canandaigua, we're in fall, we're coming up to winter time. In the city, it comes up every year. City residents are responsible to shovel their own sidewalks. And from everything I've heard, we're going to have a much, we're going to have a normal winter. Last year was a not normal winter. Okay? But I guess we're supposed to have all predictions, including the farmer's almanac, say, we're having it. So we have an aging population here in the city of Canandaigua. Can we have people with snow blowers and time on their hands receive something in return? Rather than having to add one more thing on to the city budget, one more thing on to DPW, having to buy all this equipment. Can we set up, you know, neighborhood things? Where someone receives a benefit from the city that's not really going to cost us much in terms of economics. But all of a sudden, they're the ones who are helping take care of their portion of the street. There's gotta be some really inventive ways to do stuff. And I think that needs to be looked into rather than just the typical raised taxes or lower taxes or taxes, taxes. Or, you know, there, there, there are creative ways of doing things.
That'll do it for this edition of FLX today. If you'd like to hear more conversations like this one, check out the show on your favorite podcast platform or subscribe to the fingerlakesone.com YouTube channel. Have a great day and we will see you next time.